Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of Tuesday, September 6th, 2022. I ask you all to please rise. We'll do the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
I invite you to join with me if you're willing. Gracious Father, we begin this commission meeting with gratitude and thanks for all the blessings that have been given. We remember those who are less fortunate, and we work to be a blessing in their lives. We remember our men and women in uniform around the world and their families who sacrificed so much so that we can be free. And Father, we remember our first responders who closer to home put our needs first before theirs. For all of those we remember, this evening, we ask for their safety and blessings. And for this meeting, we ask that our words and our actions reflect the best that is in each of us as we address the important matters of today. For all of this, we are grateful. We say thank you, and we say amen.
Amen.
At this time, I'd like to invite public comment, and public comment tonight will be anything that is excluding the public hearing items. So please come up to the podium and identify yourself, and good evening, Pam.
Good evening. Pamela Hammer, PGA Village, and I think I have the right space this time. Good evening, commissioners and staff. I'm here tonight with a few of my friends. I don't think you needed us to pack the room tonight or send you a whole pile of emails like we have in the past, but I want to address an issue that has been festering for many, many years. I am addressing you as a 26-year property owner in St. Lucie County and a 22-year resident. Many things have changed over these years. One of those is the use of a roadway by the name of Commerce Boulevard or Commerce Center Drive. I've spoken to most of you and met with our county attorney, Dan McIntyre, as a PGA Village owner regarding the fairness of PGA Village residents paying to maintain a public roadway, in particular from the circle at Reserve Boulevard south to the county-city border on Commerce Boulevard. In previous years, Commerce Boulevard was not a major connector road, but it is now. It is a public street that allows traffic to flow from the circle to Crosstown Parkway, Verano Development, Publix, and a new service station. Soon, it will be the only access for the owners of 99 homes to be built at Maritage. Many of the future owners from Glaze Cut Off Road, the individuals going to Main Street Village, which is going to be developed very soon, and workers at the school district building find and will find it an easier route to go on Commerce Boulevard, especially with the traffic tiups on the bridge right now. Over the years, we've met many times to try to determine a solution. Construction plans and as-builts were sought from the developer, the county, and previous vendors. Nothing has been found. The plaques with maintenance designations were often discussed, ending in a wide difference of opinion. However, I want to talk about the issue of fairness. Is it fair for PGA Village residents to pay for the maintenance of all the other public roads throughout St. Lucie County and yet bear the sole burden for maintaining part of Commerce Boulevard? We all say no. My friends and I are asking you, in the spirit of fairness, to please take over the maintenance of this roadway. If the property assessor's documents are correct, the developer, Colter, still owns part of the roadway I'm describing. You may be able to get and require additional funding from them before they turn over that portion of the road. You've made your budgeting hearings and workshops ahead. I'm asking you to place the ownership and maintenance of Commerce Boulevard on those agendas. We don't believe it is justified to ask 2,500 homeowners to maintain a public roadway that is not within their community. Thank you for your consideration and prompt action on this matter.
Thank you. Do you need anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Please introduce yourself. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Eric Robey, the new executive director for the American Red Cross for the Palm Beach and Treasure Coast chapter. And with me right here is Rita Kurtz. She is one of our community volunteer leaders. And I always like to bring a volunteer because the Red Cross is made up of 90% of volunteers with only 10% of our workforce being paid staff. I wanted to allow you to put a face with the name. I will be your direct contact if you ever need anything from the Red Cross. And since it is National Preparedness Month, and also Saturday is the height of the hurricane season, I thought it would be a good time to pay a visit to let you know that the Red Cross is ready. We have more than 470 volunteers that are trained in our chapter, which is comprised of Palm Beach and the Treasure Coast counties, including Okeechobee County. And we continue to look for new volunteers, and we continue to train volunteers. We've used kind of the quiet time in this season to make sure that we are ready to go. In fact, we had a simulation where we set up a shelter, and we made sure that since we haven't been able to do that in a while, which is a good thing, we were ready for that, and for anyone who was new that they had that experience as well. I also pulled some numbers just for St. Lucie County for our impact with the American Red Cross has in your county. We do a lot more than just hurricane shelters. In fact, the number-one disaster we attend to is house fires, and we reported to 38 disasters last fiscal year in St. Lucie County, and that helped 60 households, 165 people, and we were able to give out nearly $41,000 in direct funds so those families could get back on their feet immediately. In addition to our training for lifeguarding, aquatics, CPR, we also are focusing on our service to the armed forces. We have a hotline for any veteran if they need help for any matter that they might need. We have caseworkers that will help provide financial assistance, housing assistance. We also have volunteers that make sure that no volunteer is ever lonely inside of a VA and that they have all of the materials they might need, such as socks or comfort gear. And I wanted to do one last call for action, which is a call for volunteers. If anyone is interested in volunteering, we would love to speak with you and to do so, or if you need help, the best place to go is online to redcross.org/southflorida. On your podium there, I did provide a pamphlet with my contact information and my cellphone. Any questions, any concerns, please give me a call, and thank you.
It was a pleasure meeting with you this afternoon. Mr. Lango, you can attest to all the good that they do. Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public who would like to speak? If not, I'll close public comment, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the B.O.C.C. special meeting of July 13th, then the regular meeting of the 13th, the regular meeting of the 19th, the informal of August 9th, and the regular meeting of August 9th.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hutchinson, a second by Commissioner Townsend. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Tonight, we have two proclamations. The first proclamation is the week of September 17th through the 23rd is Constitution Week in St. Lucie County, Florida, and accepting tonight will be Pam Blumquist, Regent, Constitution Day Committee, and Lorana Hillard. And if you're both here, you can meet me over by the podium, and then they'll read the proclamation.
A resolution proclaiming September 17th through 23rd, 2022, as Constitution Week in St. Lucie County, Florida, where the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, has made the following determinations. Constitution Week is a commemoration of America's most important document and is celebrated annually during the week of September 17th through 23rd. September 17th, 2022, is the actual 235th anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of the United States of America. The Constitution ensures the rights of every American and provides the framework for the administration of our country, yet few know to date or celebrate its importance in any fashion. The United States Constitution stands as a testament to the tenacity of Americans throughout history to maintain their liberties, freedoms, and inalienable rights. The celebration of the Constitution was started by the Daughters of the American Revolution in 1955. DAR petitioned Congress to set aside September 17th through 23rd annually to be dedicated to the observance of the Constitution Week. The resolution was later adopted by the U.S. Congress and signed into public law on August 2nd, 1956, by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, that this board does hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2022, as Constitution Week in St. Lucie County, Florida, passed and duly adopted the 6th day of September, 2022.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, and a second by Commissioner Bart. So all those in favor, aye. Ladies, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, please.
Okay.
We wish to thank the board on behalf of the Cora Stickney Harper Chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution. We truly appreciate this opportunity to share the knowledge and importance of Constitution Day. Our chapter is sponsoring a booth at the Downtown Green Market on Saturday, September 17th, from 8 until 12. We hope you'll attend, and we hope that our community will remember and respect our Constitution and practice government as we, the people. Thank you.
Would you like to say anything? Well, let's get a picture, ladies, and then I'll give you this proclamation, okay? Just turn around, and we'll look at Eric. You can hold this. Thank you, Father.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, I'll ask Tracy Hernandez, the Director of Development Services for Sun Coast Mental Health, William Wims, CEO of New Horizons, and Chad Adcock for September 22nd as National Suicide Prevention Awareness in St. Lucie County.
A resolution proclaiming the month of September, 2022, as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in St. Lucie County, Florida, where the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, has made the following determinations. September is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, which directs the community's attention to the public health epidemic destroying lives, devastating families, and impacting communities. According to the CDC, as the second-leading cause of death for the ages 10 through 34 and the fourth-leading cause for ages 35 through 54, suicide is a major contributor to premature mortality. Suicide is the only type of death that is 100% preventable. According to Florida Health Charts, in 2020, the age-adjusted rate per 100,000 population of suicide deaths, all in St. Lucie County, was 11.2 compared to Florida at 13.1. In 2020, there were nearly two times as many suicides, 45,979 in the United States, as there were homicides, 24,576. And according to the AFSP, for every completed suicide in 2020, there were 26 attempts at suicide. By offering the public education, data, support, and services, we as a community have taken a step toward preventing another suicide by our residents. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, that this board does hereby proclaim the month of September, 2022, as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in St. Lucie County, Florida, passed and duly adopted the 6th day of September, 2022.
Do I have a motion to approve? We have a motion by Commissioner Zadowski, a second by Commissioner Townsend. All those in favor, aye. Would you like to say a few words, ma'am? Please.
Thank you, commissioners and guests. My name is Tracy Hernandez, and I'm the new Director of Development for Sun Coast Mental Health Center. I am here with our CEO, Deborah Engel, and our St. Lucie County Program Director, Pam Keen. Sun Coast is a leading mental and behavioral health provider, offering community-based and family-centered care to children and families with limited resources in St. Lucie County and throughout the Treasure Coast. It is my privilege and pleasure to be here today to accept this proclamation for Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. As we try to put COVID-19 behind us, we are experiencing what could be considered a second pandemic of mental health that is impacting Americans regardless of age, gender, or race. The numbers are especially alarming among students and young people, which we recognize at Sun Coast as 74% of our clients are youth. According to a 2022 study, 1 in 3 high school students experienced poor mental health during the pandemic. 44.2% of students experienced persistent feelings of sadness or hopelessness. Almost 1 in 5 seriously considered suicide, and 1 in 10 attempted suicide. On average, there are 130 suicides a day in this country, which means someone takes their own life about every 11 minutes. And for every death by suicide in recent years, there were 25 to 30 attempts. In July, the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline transitioned to a three-digit code to facilitate how people in distress access emergency mental health services and support. The FCC selected the 988 number to elevate mental health crisis response to the same level as calling 911 for other emergencies. At Sun Coast Mental Health Center, we are addressing this health crisis through our comprehensive service provision and holistic approach to treatment. We serve clients in their homes, at their schools, in the community, at our four Sun Coast locations, and through telehealth counseling, case management, and psychiatry. Since March 2020, our professional staff has facilitated over 36,000 telehealth visits, and we currently serve close to 1,400 clients monthly, including 466 in this county alone, and hundreds of students at more than 40 schools in our four-county service area. Here in St. Lucie County, Sun Coast is contracted with the school district to provide onsite, in-person, mental health counseling upon referral at several elementary schools, including Lawnwood, White City, Sweet, Weatherby, and Savannah Ridge. It is common for many of our clients to share that they have considered or attempted suicide prior to seeking treatment, and we are hopeful that greater acceptance and awareness will encourage more people to get the help they may need. Like 17-year-old David, who received services and support at Sun Coast Mental Health Center, to help him overcome two suicide attempts and the severe depression that was negatively affecting his life, especially his grades and future academic plans. After working with a therapist, case manager, and nurse practitioner from medication management, there was a significant improvement in David's mood and self-esteem. He graduated high school with a 3.4 GPA and a partial scholarship for college, and has successfully completed his treatment plan goals. On behalf of the children, adults, and families we serve, sincere thanks to all of you for joining us in this community effort to end the stigma, promote recovery, raise public awareness, and increase funding as we empower, engage, and inspire positive mental health and wellness throughout the local area. Please mark your calendars for our Suicide Prevention Symposium on September 28th, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at Coral Shores Behavioral Health in Stewart. This is a free educational event held in recognition of this important Awareness Month. I left flyers, the day flyers, on the table outside the doors, and you can visit our website for more information, www.suncostmentalhealth.org. Thank you so much.
Would you like to get a picture?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Chad Adcock with 211, and I'll be brief because my friends at Sun Coast covered everything that I was going to say. So 211 has been for more than 50 years the nonprofit helpline, crisis line for anyone in Palm Beach and the Treasure Coast counties that needed any assistance. Our staff are available 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, to help anyone that might need those types of services. If you don't know where to turn to, the first call is easy. It's just 211. And as was mentioned, with the 988 rollout in July, that number went active in mid-July, and since that time, our call volume has doubled already, and they're expecting our call volume to increase somewhere between 300 and 800% in the first year alone. So we know that, as also was mentioned, after a crisis, there's 12 to 18 months later is when you start to see that third wave of mental health crisis as a result of that. I don't know when the pandemic started or ended, and I don't think anybody does, but I know we're in the middle of that mental health side of it right now. So our call volume is increasing. There's a serious need for more mental health services, and we're here to help with that with our partners at Sun Coast and New Horizons and many others here on the Treasure Coast, and we thank you for bringing light to this very important matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to get a picture? Yeah, hold your proclamation. There you go.
What's up?
Take two. Thank you. Thank you all so much. Okay, moving right along, and thank you all. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there anyone like anything pulled or for discussion? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bart. Do I have a second? We have a second by Commissioner Townsend. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Just a couple of things. We approved engineering service proposals for six utility lines that is American Rescue Plan dollars. Also, Gordy Road, 10-mile bridge, that's the infrastructure sales tax. Also, the Culpeper and Turing Oleanders Sidewalk from Midway to South Market Avenue, that's funded by the American sales tax. So I just want our citizens to know that. Public hearing. This is a second hearing for the update of the St. Lucie County fire and rescue impact fees to the Fire EMS Impact Fees Ordinance and adoption of the revised proposal schedule fee. We have somebody presenting? Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Joe Spade, Impact Fee Program Manager. The agenda before you is for the adoption of the 2022 Fire EMS Study and updated ordinance. Chapter 24, Article 3 of the county code establishes the Fire District as the sole provider of fire emergency services for the county. County collects Fire EMS Impact Fees to provide the Fire District with adequate funding for capital outlays to provide these services. The Fire EMS Impact Fee Study was first adopted in 2000 and last updated in 2017. In 2021, the Fire District engaged Dr. James Nicholas to update its fee. The study was completed in May 10th, 2022, and approved by the Fire Board in July 20th. Subsequently, the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the recommendation to the Board to adopt the Fire EMS Study on July 21st with a 5-0 vote. Once approved, the adopted rates will be phased in over two to four years based on state statute. Any increases will go into effect October 1, any increases will go into effect January 1, 2023, and every January thereafter for three years. For clarity and to address common misconception that impact fee studies increase all impact fees, the Fire EMS Impact Fee Study assessed the impact of each land use category on the Fire EMS services. As a result, based on demand caused by each land use category, some fees went up, some went down. As it relates to single-family residents, for example, the rate that was adopted in 2017 was $617. With the previous annual CPI increases, the current rate is $667. The new rate, based on the study, is supposed to be $650, which is a reduction of 2.6%, and as such, this decrease will go into effect on October 1. The Board approved the first hearing of this item on August 9. The agenda represents the second of two hearings. At this time, staff should request in the Board to approve the Fire EMS Study and orders adoption. As the Fire District is the sole provider of fire services, Chief Lango is present to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this subject matter? Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone from the public would like to speak on this subject matter? Seeing none, I'll close public comment.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hutchinson, a second by Commissioner Zadowski. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Next up is County Attorney. Resolution 2022-120, Solid Waste Final Assessment Resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Assistant County Attorney Catherine Barbieri will be handling this side. Good evening.
Good evening, Assistant County Attorney Catherine Barbieri. What you have before you is Resolution 2022-120, which is a solid waste final assessment resolution. Pursuant to code, the Board of County Commissioners has the authority to impose annual assessments for solid waste, collection, disposal, administrative services, facilities, or programs against certain property within St. Lucie County. The Board initially levied reoccurring annual assessments on residential property within the county's solid waste urban service area for the purpose of including solid waste fees on the property taxes starting in 2004. This method of collection is in lieu of the garbage hauler billing the property owners directly for garbage and recycling services. This is permitted by state statute. On July 5th, 2022, the Board adopted Resolution 202067, which is a preliminary assessment resolution which initiated the process required to impose the solid waste assessments for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2022. The preliminary assessment resolution scheduled a public hearing for tonight, September 6th, 2022, to consider adopting a final resolution approving the solid waste assessment rule for fiscal year 2022-23, and directed the mailing and publication of notice for the affected property owners. The attached solid waste final assessment resolution concludes the process required to impose the solid waste assessment for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2022, at a rate of $279.96 per dwelling unit, and directs the delivery of this rule to the tax collector for collection of the assessment on the 2022 property tax bill. At the public hearing, the Board may vote to assess a lower rate assessment if you wanted tonight. This rate at $279.96 per dwelling unit is $3.82 more than last year. That's all, yes.
Okay.
Tonight's hearing was properly advertised on October 8, 2022, in the Treasure Coast newspapers and staff. There is staff here if you have any questions, and staff recommends the Board adopt the solid waste final assessment resolution and authorize the Chair to sign the resolution.
Just so we're clear, that we're still in the unincorporated area, you'll have trash pickup twice a week, and you're recycling for a $3.82 increase, correct?
I believe so, yes. I think Mr. Landry is going to confirm that.
Okay. Mr. Landry?
Chairman, George Landry, Director of Public Insurance Hollowage, for the record. Yes, it is correct. Our service levels are not changing as far as the pickups twice a week for garbage, once a week recycling, yard waste, bulky waste, things of that nature.
Perfect. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this subject matter? Again, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this subject matter? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Zadowski. Do I have a second? A second by Commissioner Bart. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to number two, that's exchange agreement between Willow Lakes LLC and St. Lucie County. This item is quasi-judicial.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item will be presented by Joanne Riley, Property Acquisition Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, for the record, Joanne Riley, Property Acquisition Manager. Item 9B2 is a proposed exchange agreement between Willow Lakes LLC and St. Lucie County. The county received a proposal to exchange property with Willow Lakes representative, Lee Dobbins, for approximately 2.09 acres along Midway Road, as shown in yellow, and also for approximately 3.3 approximately 3.31 acres of Gordy Road right-of-way shown in red owned by St. Lucie County. On August 23rd, 2022, county staff received an email from Lee Dobbins on behalf of his client Willow Lakes requesting a continuance of tonight's public hearing to be scheduled to be reheard again on November 1st, 2022 at 6:00 PM or as soon thereafter as possible. County staff recommends that the Board accept the request from Mr. Dobbins on behalf of Willow Lakes to continue tonight's public hearing until November 1st, 2022 at 6:00 PM or as soon and thereafter as the item may be heard. I am available for any questions the Board may have.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this subject matter? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing.
Because it's quasi judicial, we need to discuss.
Oh, I'm sorry, quasi judicial.
I was gonna say, I was gonna go ahead and address that. I've only spoken with staff and way back, the applicant's representative.
Under?
No one.
Kathy?
Same, I think it was a long time ago, I spoke to applicant Ann Lee Dobbins and staff.
Dobbins and staff.
Same here, Dobbins and staff.
Mr. Chair, I have one other question I'd like to ask. Do we know if the November 2nd, is that what it was?
Yes, ma'am.
November 1st date, is that one getting bigger? This is like the fourth, fifth, or sixth time we've continued this and I know not all of them were, they were all for different reasons. And I understand.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Hutchinson, we are hoping so. The applicant, Mr. Dobbins and Willow Lakes, his client, have been working with engineering to determine the exact right-of-way that is being requested on Midway Road and also during this process, we had some appraisals done of the value of the right-of-way and because of the continuance, those have also become stale, so we've had to order new appraisals. We're hoping and praying that this November 2nd date will be in concrete and we will do the best we can to adhere to that.
Okay, and I appreciate that because I know getting the appraisals is hard and that's why I was questioning the timing, is that gonna work or not?
Yes, Commissioner Hutchinson, those have been ordered last week and we are hopeful to have all of that wrapped up in that same period of time deciding on the total acreage and what the appraised value will be.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions to staff?
This popped into my head is that if we continue to do these appraisals, are they paying for the appraisals after they ask for the continuance?
Madam, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Sadowski's staff has been paying for those appraisals as part of the exchange agreement, but we can certainly visit with the applicant and see if we can work out some other arrangements for reimbursement on that if that's something that the Board would like for me to.
I just think, you know, based on the number of continuances and those that may come in the future, and we are seeing the market change very rapidly and so they get stale faster actually, and so that becomes a significant cost as part of this process. So I think we should keep that in our minds as these go forward, at the very least.
Will do.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Townsend. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second by Commissioner Hutchinson? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next is a public hearing, ordinance amending Chapter 10 Buildings and Building Regulations of the Code of Ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Assistant County Attorney Catherine Barbieri will be handling this item.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, for the record, Assistant County Attorney Catherine Barbieri. What you have before you is an ordinance amending Chapter 10 Buildings and Building Regulations St. Lucie County Code to revise the requirements for appointment to the Board. St. Lucie County has a Contractors Licensing Board, it has been authorized under Chapter 489 Florida statutes and was originally, I think, codified for us in 1967. We have a 10-member board. On that board, we have one that is supposed to be a licensed architect and one that is supposed to be a licensed engineer. It has been increasingly difficult to fill those positions. The staff has reached out to different organizations to try to have them filled and we have not been able to fill them and actually, the last Contractors Licensing Board had to be canceled due to a lack of quorum. It is a large board, it's a 10-member board. What we are asking is to change the requirement that they be a licensed architect and a licensed engineer to be in, or an individual with a bachelor's degree in the field of architect or an individual with a bachelor's degree in field of engineering. We have had someone who has the bachelor's degree in architect expressing an interest to be on the board and would have the knowledge. This has been presented to the Contractors Licensing Board. The Chair of the Board was receptive to it and liked it. The Board was unable to vote on it because we didn't have the quorum, but they all had it. I asked them all to email me if they had any objections and the Chair told me he was supportive, nobody else emailed me. The attorney for the Board also emailed me and was supportive of it. Based on that, staff is recommending this minor change to hopefully help us fill some positions on the Board.
Thank you. Any questions?
Needs a public hearing.
Any questions to staff? This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this subject matter? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing.
Chair, move approval, staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to C, Planning and Development Services. This is quasi judicial also, this is 343 Trowbridge Road Rezone. I think that's Mr. McCrain. Now there he is. Hi, Chris.
Well, he's coming up, Mr. Chair. I have spoken with staff and I think we've all received copies of emails from residents, letters, however you would put it.
Same.
Same. Kathy?
I've spoke to staff, I've spoke to the planner Todd Mowry, I've also spoke to the applicant in prior conversation.
Staff and, staff, actually.
I also spoke to staff and Todd Mowry.
I filled that out.
You didn't pick up your phone. Go ahead, Chris, thank you.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Chris McCrain, Planner 2 with the Planning and Development Services Department and tonight I'll be presenting Agenda Item C, I'm sorry, 9C1 for a rezone petition submitted by South Florida Land Clearing Incorporated for the property located at 343 Trowbridge Road in Fort Pierce and this is a quasi judicial agenda item. The 25.13 acre parcel is situated on the south side of, I'm sorry, on the east side of Trowbridge Road, just south of Orange Avenue and is also located within the county's Orange Avenue mixed-use activity area. The subject parcels and the surrounding properties are designated by the mixed-use or MXD future land use and according to the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan, the underlying mixed-use land area is identified as the West Orange Avenue mixed activity area and requires that all uses be restricted to uses that would be allowed within the industrial, commercial, transportation utilities, public facilities, future land use designations. Subject property and the parcels to the south are zoned AG1 or Agricultural 1 zoning district and the properties to the north and east are zoned industrial light. The properties to the west are zoned commercial general. This petition seeks to rezone the subject parcel from the Agricultural 1 to Industrial Light zoning district in order to provide a compatible zoning district which allows for the storage of heavy equipment. In accordance with the public notice requirements outlined in Section 11.00.03 of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, public notice was advertised in the St. Lucie County News Tribune on August 25th, 2022. In addition, notices were mailed to 10 surrounding property owners located within 500 feet of the subject property and a sign was posted on the property. Mail notices were sent to the 10 property owners within 500 feet of the subject site and the Planning and Development Services received a letter of objection dated August 14th, 2022 and was signed by two adjacent property owners as denoted by the red dots on the attached, on the above map. The petition conforms to the standards of review as set forth in the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, Section 11.06.03 and is consistent with the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan goals, objectives, and policies. Staff is recommending that the Board of County Commissioners grant approval of the requested rezone petition. The applicant and staff are available to answer any questions that the Board may have.
Any questions of staff?
I have some, but I'm gonna hold off till we get further into this.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this subject matter? Again, this is a public hearing. Would anyone in the audience like to speak on this subject matter? Mr. Mowry?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. Nice to be before you. Say, look at the presentation. Chris did a wonderful job with his presentation, the work that he did. Don't have any questions or comments on that, but if there are comments that come up as a result of conditions that may happen, would love to address you on those. We had had some staff comments before that perhaps gave us a little bit of concern about perhaps the fact that there are two different sites and I do have, you can actually see on Chris's aerial here, the subject site is the existing site that is part of this rezoning question and there has been, the property is currently zoned ag and what I want to sort of differentiate is the fact that with the ag use, Gary has probably close to just over 100 pieces of equipment that he provides various types of activities around the St. Lucie and Inverford County areas. Some of the equipment is ag-related, some of the equipment is construction-related. So technically, the only type of equipment that can be sitting on the ag site would be ag equipment, tractors, discs, things that are related to that industry. There is also a, an existing double-wide building that's on the site that actually was owned by Riverside Bank and that particular trailer is what currently houses their security detail. There was a significant break-in at their property several years ago. They actually had a semi-trailer, the truck was all completely taken. They've lost a lot of equipment over the years, but that was a significant taking. The police, Sheriff's Department was quite involved, they actually found the guy, he's actually been serving some time as a result of what happened, but that caused them to have some concerns. So they picked this building up from Riverside, they brought it to the site and they've had a security detail on that. That's what sparked the actual code enforcement case was the fact that they had a trailer on-site and so that's where this process began. In working with staff, we're going through the rezoning to bring it in compliance with the surrounding area, so there are no questions or comments that were brought up by staff as well as what we have to that, but there were then some comments that were made relative to this site being brought into compliance along with the site to the north and that's what caused some concerns for the applicant realizing they've been operating since 2003 on the northern site, there haven't been any code enforcement violations, there's been nothing that's been opened on that particular area and so they were concerned with that. They do have an existing entrance that would access this subject site that's part of the rezoning and if need be, in working with staff, they could easily open up that entrance to go into the property if that becomes a point of concern, but it was one, they didn't want to get in a situation where perhaps there would be, it's not necessarily a contract rezoning because that can't be the case, but it would be one where there'd be a rezoning and then we would also then see staff say, okay, and in addition, we need you to come back and provide us with a full site plan, you're gonna have to do full stormwater, you're gonna have to do full paved parking, a lot of things that don't really work when you have track hoes, when you have bulldozers and other equipment similar to the county. The county has a yard, the yard is a gravel yard, there are those things that are all in place. This is a very similar operation. The building to the north is just a maintenance facility. They, they don't have, as you can see, 100 pieces of equipment on the site. They have staff that come in, drop their vehicles off at the site and then are often taken with, within a group to the various sites wherever they may be doing their construction work throughout the county or the tri-county area. With that, I'll turn it back to staff, but I just wanted to make note of that comment in case it didn't adequately come up through the discussions that take place. Be glad to provide any answers that you may have. We had a short presentation, I'll hold off on providing that unless it's helpful. Have some current photos as well to sort of show you the site if you'd like to get a feel for what the existing double-wide looks like as well as the condition of that area, the view on Trowbridge Road or the access entrance that's currently there for their main building. So whatever I can do to provide assistance, be glad to do that. I also have the applicant, Mr. Gary White, and his bride with us tonight, so if they can answer questions as well, they'd be glad to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mowry.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I have a couple for Chris. Todd picked up on some of them, so I'm trying to understand, the goal here is to let the property on the south be rezoned in order to bring the trailer into compliance, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'm trying to understand why the property to the north should have anything to do with bringing that piece into compliance. If the property to the north is owned by the applicant and he is to do a cross-access easement stating that that property has the right to enter from his north side property, why, we all know that our equipment is on brass and gravel and we don't have all of our surfaces on asphalt, why would the north property not be in existence and be grandfathered in? And if it just takes the easement from the north property to the south property to bring the south property into compliance? Does that make sense?
So, it does, thank you. And I believe what we're looking to do is rezone the property to allow for the correct zoning designation, to allow for the onsite security quarters and then we would be asking the applicant to either provide a unity of title to combine the two parcels or provide a recorded access easement that provides access to the southern parcel. Public Works and staff would not be approving an additional driveway to the site because of the proximity to the intersection and the proximity to the existing driveway. So the improvements that would be necessary would be any parking on the southern parcel where they're storing any vehicles. Our code requires that anytime there's a storage of vehicles or anything that runs on fuel would be required to be stored on a paved surface and any stormwater with that paved surface would have to be handled through the site development permit for that southern parcel.
So then I have a question. If all of his, if he, if the applicant agrees to park his equipment on the northern piece, which is already in compliance, it's been in existing, it's a business, and he agrees to do that, which would trigger code, if a neighbor saw equipment back on the southern piece, he could be fined a code, but that would be up to him if he took that route and said, no, I'll keep my equipment only on the north piece, I only want the south piece rezoned to be light industrial because that brings it into compliance with the security housing. Is that an option if the applicant agrees to keep all of his business on the north parcel?
I don't know if that's a call that I can make myself, I would have to defer that to either my planning manager or the, the planning director.
Come on down. Thank you, my take.
I mean, I understand the trailer for security purposes is triggering the rezoning and I understand that to make that compliant, but if we just leave the south parcel and bring that into compliance and the applicant could agree to keep his business to the north parcel...
Everybody should be happy.
Everybody should be happy with that and it's on the applicant that if he sprawls over into that, he's gonna know he's gonna get a code violation.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. We would have to review that northern parcel because I'm not exactly sure what the zoning compliance is there for and if it includes storage, if it doesn't include storage, then we'd also be looking for improvements there for the parking and storage of vehicles and equipment.
Okay, so we don't know?
I don't have it in front of me, I apologize.
No, that's okay. Okay, so how long do you think, I mean, I don't know that the applicant wants to do this or Mr. Mowry, whatever, what I'm just saying, if it's gonna mean coming back to the Board and having that information brought forward, is it something you're willing to look at or, I mean...
I don't know if they want to defer the rezoning because that is still needed for the southern parcel to become, to come into compliance. We can review this week the zoning compliance for the northern parcel and meet with the applicant to go over any, any conditions that might be there.
But if we move forward tonight on the southern parcel to move it forward to light industrial and do the zoning, is it something that's an option for us to do that tonight and then come back on the northern piece?
The northern piece is not in question tonight. It is already industrial light and it already has a zoning compliance. My understanding is that one does not have the code violation, it's the southern parcel that has the code violation.
Correct, but I, but I thought the whole thing tonight also was you were recommending a unity of title to tie them together, so that does affect the north piece.
So that is not part of the rezoning, we cannot condition a rezoning.
Okay.
It is part of the process of coming into compliance for the code violation.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
As per the code violation itself, how long has it been in existence? What were the costs associated with it or the fines associated with that? And if we move this forward as a benefit to this business, will those fines and costs be submitted to deal with the loss of taxpayer dollars?
I don't know all the fines, but the code violation started in February of this year.
Okay, so not that long. For me, simply, you know, understanding that this will get it into compliance, but again, I have the issue is, I don't want to go all over the county and start doing zoning changes to get people out of their code violations, you know, this is a very... You know, this is a very unique situation, it hasn't come before me since I've been here, so this is very unique, and I don't want to open the door to a precedent being set that that's what we're gonna do for folks that haven't been complying with the code and zoning land use options, and then open up a whole new network of challenges.
Understood.
Any other comments?
I mean, I'll just follow up with, I concur, we don't need to do that. I agree, but this is an unusual circumstance, too. This is a piece of property that fronts Orange Avenue, and the applicant owns and has owned the piece that abuts up to it, which it's all right there together, and it's been utilized for this. And the problem that I have actually with the northern piece having to be paved is, we don't even comply to our own code. Our road and bridges all over shell and everything else, so how do we hold an applicant to paving stuff when we don't even do it ourselves? So I have a concern with that, but this is, you know, there are exceptions, and this is an exception, I think, because this is an existing business, it's been there, and this has been utilized for this because of what happened. So I agree, Commissioners, with what you're saying, but I just think this is an unusual circumstance as well, too, so.
Mr. Chair, as a representative, I made my comments about the code violations and any fines and costs to the county taxpayers. Would that be resolved if this gets approved to be rezoned? That will help to finalize those code violations, because they've been in place now for at least eight months.
Right. Thank you for your question. So my understanding is that the current fines are being withheld, so that they're waiting on the conclusion of this process, and so I don't believe they're accruing at this point. There are fines that are in place, and I'm sure then whatever that amount was up until the date that they were able to take positive action, that I'm sure there will be a fine that will be imposed upon them that would be required to be paid. But during this five-month process, or whatever that we've been going through, there has, to my understanding, not been a continual requirement every day since he's been showing positive action towards taking this.
Well, simply stated, for my support of tonight's request, is that the code issues and the financial concerns that which may be attached to them be resolved at the same time. I would support it.
And that would be extremely helpful, and I know it's one where, I realize, everybody lives in a different world at times with their employment. Having gone out and spent considerable time with the family and trying to understand their operation, I was even surprised to see that their own maintenance facility itself literally has railroad tracks, tracks inside the concrete within the building, because they can't even run their equipment inside the building unless they're riding on those tracks to keep from tearing up the concrete. So if you can imagine where your tires would normally travel, those are lined with double train tracks, sections, so that way, when they bring a dozer in to do maintenance work on it, that dozer's not tearing up the concrete, it's riding on that metal set of skids into the building, following back out the same path, then in the gravel, it can turn and be loaded onto a trailer to be taken to a job site. If it were a paved surface, it would never survive that twisting, turning with their track hoes and with their dozers, which they have quite a few dozers that are constantly coming in for, this is only a maintenance facility there on the north side, as well as their actual physical offices, there are two buildings on the northern piece, so thank you for your concern.
Well, this is a separate matter, but from your point of view, there have been a number of businesses along Orange Avenue that have been contacting me, asking me to help push an issue about cleaning up the entryway into St. Lucie County, and that they were hoping that we could have local businesses participate voluntarily in cleaning up the areas and doing some beautification along the area. So just know that that's out there, and we're still having the conversations through the community first, because if it's community-driven, it's a lot better than having me come out and say, I think we need to do this. But my suggestion to them was to actually have those conversations with the other business, business to business, and see if we could clean up the area.
And to your point as well, I know they discussed some things that they themselves like to do that area to help improve it. I know they've worked with the Carter's quite a bit. In fact, there were questions as well about fuel. They buy all their fuel next door at Carter's, and have been a heavy supporter of that. And so I know that whole area is something that kind of has a unique nature. We all love going out to Carter's on the way to Adams and enjoying that experience, so I know it is a part of that area. But you're right, Commissioner, there's some neat opportunities for some improvements, so thank you.
Commissioner Hodgson, anything?
I need to follow up on something Commissioner Townsend said, and, well, first off, I need to know, is the requirement a yes or no on the unity of title? Because I thought I heard you say, we can't do that.
For the rezoning itself that is before the board, we cannot place any conditions. But through the code violation, the property owner still has to do their site development permit and zoning compliance, and it would be a condition on that process.
On that part, okay. That's where I was getting confused on that part, when you questioned that, on the unity of title. Can I get some clarification on, are those vehicles that are shown in the picture here, are those stored there for a length of time, or these being brought in for the day to get worked on, and then out the next day? Can you walk me through that?
I can. And so most of the equipment that you'll see onsite today is rotated on a very, very regular basis. It is a combination, I was out there again this afternoon, there were four tractors on that southern piece that were in place, two of them had discs behind those. There was a, several farm dump trucks compared to thinking about your typical on-road dump truck. There were things that were set for ag equipment. In fact, this is the presentation view here, this is being in the southwest corner of the property. As we're looking north, or, excuse me, as we're looking east, you'll see those are pieces of equipment that they specifically use out on, out on the farm. The mobile home that you're seeing here, I was trying to give you a view as well to see what it looks like from a neighborly standpoint. That is the view, it's not as though they went and did this for the picture, they didn't even know I was coming for that. So that's what I like, in that sense of not necessarily taking a picture that's been staged from that standpoint. There are a couple other photos, I don't know that I have some of the equipment, but if you'll move forward, they're doing quite a bit of drainage tile work right now on several farm pieces, so on the left, you'll see they had, this is on the subject piece, looking to the north. Those cabbage palm trees there on the left corner, that's about the property line between the two pieces. And then you can see their maintenance building, which they, originally that was a building that had been torn down in one of the hurricanes. They got their building permits, that building, I believe, you started building in 2004, 2005? 2005 is when that building was built, and they put that in place, building permits and all for it. As a part of the code enforcement case, they were told that they had to put in a septic system for the double-wide. In the very top of the picture, the very top right, that's the office. The office, it's all surrounded by grass, it's actually where they have a full drainage field, brand new. They also put in a second drainage field just for the mobile home, and it has a grinder pump and everything, and it sends it to that location. They've been since told, no, you have to have it right there next to the double-wide. So it's been a long process for them, they spent almost $18,000 just on that aspect alone, thinking that brought into compliance, and you know how it is. If it's not your industry, if it's not your world, they aren't quite sure what to do, they were walking through the process, they thought they were meeting the right steps and doing things, but they found out that they were needing to do more than that. So now they're at the point where they're getting the rezoning, and it was then news to them to find out that now will they be going through the rezoning, they thought that was the corrective measure, but now that they're also going to be having to make perhaps substantive improvements to either the subject site, as well as perhaps the northern site, and that caused them today to have some panic, just from thinking about why they have the property, what they're doing, how they operate, wondering if people understand how a yard works and the things that often happen in that aspect. And so I know it's a learning curve for all of us, but thank you for your time.
Mr. Chair, I just had a conversation with county attorney. I need to disclose, I'm gonna recuse myself from this, because I own property on Trow Bridge, and it's in the best interest, I think, to accuse myself from this decision.
Okay.
Have you closed public comment?
This is public hearing, does anybody from the audience want to speak? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, based on the information provided, the suggestions from staff, and the ability for the code violations to be cured, with the stipulation that I've stated that their cost to the county, that they be paid, and I think that's reasonable, because we're doing two things at once. I'm talking to the code issue and not the rezoning issue, so I'm not conditioning that. With that, I would support this and approve.
Is that a motion for him?
That was my motion.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, congratulations.
Extension, recognize the extension.
Oh, recognizing the extension, and that Commissioner Townsend had to abstain herself because she owns property on that road. Thank you. Okay. Moving right along, C-2, which is county-initiated land development code, and that's eliminating provisions for Class A mobile homes. Who's gonna be taking that? You, Mitae?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Mitae Sincero Maria, Planning and Development Services Director. For the record, tonight I will be presenting Agenda Item 9C2. This item was publicly noticed as required by the Land Development Code on August 25th. And this item, the purpose of this item, is to delete the Class A mobile home permit process and eliminate the references to Class A mobile homes throughout the Land Development Code, and ensure a consistent review procedure for both single-family detached dwelling units, as well as mobile homes or manufactured homes. This amendment is important to ensure that the county's Land Development Code remains consistent with the Florida statutes, which provide that local requirements and regulations for manufactured homes be reasonable, uniformly applied, and enforced without distinction as to whether such housing is manufactured or built in a conventional manner. This is required by Sections 320.8285 Subsection 6, and Section 553.38 of the Florida statutes. Additionally, the proposed change ensures that the Land Development Code reflects the recent change in Section 163, 3202 Florida statutes, which prohibits the application of land development regulations relating to building design elements on single-family as well as two-family dwelling units. This includes the external building color, the type and style of exterior, excuse me, exterior cladding material, the style or material of the roof structures or porches, the exterior non-structural architectural ornamentation, the location or architectural styling of windows or doors, the location or orientation of the garage, the number and the types of rooms, and the interior layout of the rooms. So that list of items are the things that we can no longer regulate.
And that's by state statute, correct?
Yes, sir. So the item before you shows an excerpt of what we're literally doing in the Land Development Code, which is deleting Section 110502, the Class A mobile home permits. And as you can see, that section establishes design element criteria, for example, the exterior finish of the roof and the walls and the skirting of a mobile home, and to utilize those elements, those design elements, in defining a mobile home as a detached single-family dwelling unit. But as stated, in 2021, the Florida Legislature amended the state statute to prohibit the application of land development regulations relating to building design elements as just listed. This new statute section, which became effective on July 1st, 2021, limits the county's ability to regulate items such as roofing materials and exterior finish of a dwelling unit, except in very limited circumstances, such as for designated historic structures, dwelling units within a community redevelopment area, or CRA, or for dwelling units located within a planned unit development, or PUD. And just as a side note there, for any existing PUDs or CRAs or whatever else, this statute change does not eliminate or affect any existing deed restriction, covenants, contractual agreements that are on those properties. So with this new statute, if a local government can no longer regulate building design elements of a single-family or two-family dwelling unit, then we should no longer regulate those same building design elements for a mobile home, particularly when we're using them to define a mobile home as a single-family detached dwelling unit. Going on, you can see that the proposed changes includes updates to our definitions. The main change is that we'd be proposing to delete the term Class A mobile home and incorporate the terms mobile home and manufactured home into the definition of detached, single-family dwelling unit. Again, this is to be consistent with Sections 320.8285 Subsection 6, and Section 553.38 of the Florida statute, which both specify that local requirements must be reasonable and uniformly applied and enforced without any distinction as to whether a building is conventionally built or manufactured. You can also see that there's a change here for the detached, single-family, where incorporates those terms into that term, and it's noted that the Florida Attorney General has issued several opinions stating that land use and zoning requirements must not discriminate against manufactured housing, and that local governments cannot exclude manufactured housing from zoning classifications that allow conventionally constructed housing. These opinions further state that local requirements and regulations related to the construction and use of residential buildings or structures must be uniformly applied and enforced, so as not to discriminate against, or, excuse me, discriminate against or exclude factory-built housing from the local community, and must be without distinction as to whether the residential house is factory-built or built in a conventional manner. Continuing on with the proposed changes to the definitions, the definition of manufactured home is being updated to be consistent with Section 320.01 Perin B of the Florida statutes, as well as the Florida Building Code, excuse me, the Florida Building Code, and it references the relevant federal seal that's required for a manufactured home. Additionally, we're proposing updates to the definition of mobile home to be consistent with Section 320.823, and Section 553.36 Perin 14, again referencing the relevant HUD certification for those units, so that they'd be consistent throughout the statutes and our code. And with that, we are proposing that this amendment move forward. The staff finds that the petition meets the standards of review as set forth on Section 110603 of the St. Lucie County Land Development Code, and is not in conflict with any of the goals, objectives, and policies with the St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan, and staff recommends scheduling this item for adoption on the September 20th BOCC meeting. And just before I stop to answer any particular questions, I did want you to know that I contacted Martin County, Indian River County, the City of Fort Pierce, and PSL to see if they are doing anything related to this. I did not receive any comments back from PSL, but all the other jurisdictions are reviewing their codes to see what needs to be updated based on these statutory changes. Additionally, I wanted to note that the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, is currently proposing updates to its manufactured home standards, and they are updating the construction and safety standards and installation standards that they have, which will be hopefully by the end of the year. And these are to make the manufactured home standards more consistent with the Florida Building Code. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for staff?
I've got a question. As has already been stated, this was done by the state, and to me, it seems like we've jumped too fast on trying to implement and follow the state rules, because it sounds, again, like we're the first one out, first man out, and I don't even have anything else. You're saying that there's federal changes at the federal level through HUD coming through, why are we not waiting till then? Because I would think they would have to be inserted in here at some point.
So it's not something that would go into our Land Development Code, it's actually the standards that the federal government uses to certify and provide the standards for constructing a mobile home and installing a mobile home, that if any changes would go into the Florida Building Code, but nothing would go into our Land Development Code.
And, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Hodgson, you can say it's an Oscar, but I can't say Hodgson. So I think this is really initiated from us when we had the mobile home come to us, and they were wondering why they were actually here, if the state said it has to be this way, there wouldn't be any, treating it any differently than in a single-family home. So I think that was really the impetus of why that started. And I'm glad you clarified that, because that was where I was going with the question, so thank you.
Well, my other concern is, you know, this kind of came to us as a surprise to everybody, that the state had gone through this, we were focusing on other things, and this one kind of got put through there, because I never heard the first thing. I don't know how many of us were up in Tallahassee this past time. That being said, I'm not in favor of even moving this forward till I know who else is gonna be doing it. Now, that's Randy's opinion. But I don't see the rule that says we have to move forward this fast on it. Because I would like to, wait a minute, if I have to fish, I would rather see us be more proactive in going back to putting, that is one of our I would rather see us be more proactive in going back to putting that as one of our priorities, and finding out, and finding out, why did this get passed at the state level? Were they aware of what they were doing and opening the door to when they even passed it? Because I don't think it's the specific, they, from what I've read, it's been kind of misinterpreted from maybe what they originally started with.
I cannot speak to what the Florida Legislature intended.
Well, neither can I.
I just know that it occurred in July 2021.
I would think we should be going back and asking those questions to the state. And if there's way, things that they need to change, do they understand the ramifications of what they did?
Well, my question would be, and I'm going along the same way you are, Commissioner Hutchinson, there would be a second reading on September 20th?
Yes, sir.
Could we get that information, let it go tonight, but then on the second reading on the 20th, have the information that, that people from this dius are asking you this evening?
I can try to get that information for you, but I don't know that the legislature is proposing to make any changes. This has been a recent change.
I understand that, but no, but they do. Sometimes when they mess up, as most anybody would do, you go back and try to rectify, because I didn't think of that. And you go by, back and try to correct it. They've done that many times at the state, the following session. So that's what I'm kind of thinking, are we better off to go back and sit down with them and say, "Do you understand what this has done?"
I think that, going back to the conversation of the previous manufactured home that was through us, there was a cost association, associated with the, with the actually planning department, getting that approved, getting it through planning and zoning, bringing it to us, and all those costs associated with. And I'm going to ask Dan, put him on the spot, he hates that, is that, would we be in violation of state statute if we did not move forward? I mean, we could just say it took us a long time, but we're here tonight, we've already opened the door, we've already done the work. You know, we, we know what we had to do to change our, our rules, our ordinances to comply. Where, where do we stand legally as this is going forward?
Right, let, let's just assume for the sake of discussion that we defer action on this item, try to engage legislatively with the state to correct or ask them to reconsider what they did, perhaps unintended consequences, things like that. In the interim, if we get these Class A mobile home permit applications, we're going to end up charging them, we're going to hold a public hearing, and practically, because of the state law, we really can't say no. We really don't, at least not for roofing and siding, because of the way the law is. So, the reason, the main reason we, as you remember back, where we had these folks here, we had a big crowd. There were a lot of folks that were against it. You remember, we had to try to explain to them that under the state law that had changed, we really didn't have any choice, and they were kind of looking like, well, why are we here? You know, what are we doing here? And so, from a staff perspective, that resonated. It, it was a good question, and we were, you know, from a staff perspective, we were saying the same thing. So that's why we're here. I understand that the desire to, to perhaps disengage and try to talk to the legislature, that's going to happen in a while, though, that's not coming up soon. That's, you're talking months to do that. And you can do that, we can continue the hearing, but just understand, with the, with the regulations in, in the code staying there, you could have a repeat of, of folks coming in for a Class A, neighbors really not being happy be, just because of whatever, and us really not having the ability to do, do much, if anything.
But that's, again, going back to the case that we've just recently had, is it was the neighbors saying they didn't want it in their neighborhood, number one. And so, so that was a, an immediate, you know, response. And so, we put the family who was trying to get the home placed in a really bad position. So, I'm, I'm, I'm leaning toward moving this thing forward to at least a second hearing. If, if staff can find more information, get a clarification from, from the legislature on their intent or their understanding of any unintended consequences, and then take that up at the second hearing, which is, when is that?
Two weeks from now.
Two weeks.
September 20th at 9:00 AM, I think, is what we're suggesting for the second.
And then if we, if we don't have back any, you know, you know, reasonable amount of information that would make us change our mind or be, not be in compliance by saying, "No, we're not going to do this," I would be, you know, willing to move it forward at that time, based on the fact that the state has, again, preempted us. We say this to the public all the time. You know, there comes a point in time when, you know, your local elected officials are there to protect you from outside forces that may not be understanding of what is going on in our own community. Oftentimes, each of us, five of us, individually will go out and fight a case for one reason or another, and, and then when we get preempted, it takes away our ability to be that elected leader that's closest to the people. And so that's why preemption is not a good thing for local, particular city-county elements. So, you know, the preemption from the state is, is always a challenge for us to be able to represent the people we serve.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, based on what you're sharing, I think Planning and Development Services will work with Legislative Affairs and try to see what information we can have, and we'll bring that back to you in, in two weeks, and then you can decide how you would like to go forward at that point.
And I, I just want to try, I miss, I concur in Franny, I agree with you, but at the same time, we're not going to have that conversation soon, and...
I understand that, but again, and I'll use Chris's words that he said a minute ago, and I'm not, don't mean to interrupt you, it's just, if we don't keep sitting back and allowing this to happen, because now you're coming into zoning issues. That's not a state thing, that's the local officials deal with that. That's where it's kind of gone even more so over. But at some point, the board, along with all the state county commission and city commission, really need to start sitting down and addressing this to the state.
No, we do, no, I agree.
I know, I know we do, but this one was kind of like...
The last case that, that came up, it was difficult because it's like, they felt like, why were we even having the meeting? Why was it on the agenda if we already had to pass it? So what was the point? But we did it, we didn't have to, but we did it to be transparent and to go through the process for them to understand, we weren't trying to hide anything, and to explain to them in an educational way. And so, this is cleaning that language up, and I agree, we need to have that conversation. But this is cleaning the language up so that it doesn't happen again.
No, I, I totally understand that, it's just one of those, it's frustrating.
This is also just to move it forward for the second, too, and maybe you can get information before the next meeting comes up, but...
And that's what I was hoping, and that's why I started the conversation.
No, I know the conversation with the state's not going to be overnight.
So I don't want to prolong this, and then somebody else come in, and us have another unhappy neighborhood coming in here, because we have to approve the, the permit going in. That's the whole point of having this, is so that everybody's protected.
Well, in the meantime, it's a cost to the, to the applicant that I think is, is really the bigger challenge. If, if they're going to be approved anyway, the cost of going through staff and pre-planning, P and Z, the advertising, getting to us with the public hearing, I think that's the bigger issue. And I think that we can walk back whatever it is we're passing tonight, or, or may pass in two weeks, if the legislature comes back with the change. We seem to be doing some of that lately, so...
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we, I think we did, we have public comment?
Yeah, public comments, anyone from the, uh, public, I thought I said that earlier. Does anybody from the public like to speak on this? I did.
And he closed it.
Okay.
And I closed it. We don't want to get in any duff.
So I'll make a motion to approve and move it forward a second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Townsend, do we have a second?
A second hearing.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That will close public hearing, we'll go bond to the regular agenda. And this is the economic development ad valorem tax exemption.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, did we skip 10A, is that the appointment?
That was on consent, that was...
Sorry, I'm a little behind the, the curve here, Commissioner Zadovsky threw a curve at me when...
No, that item was moved to consent.
We got put on consent.
Yes, thank you. All right, this item relates to the, it's positive news, the economic ad valorem tax exemption for an additional 10 years. In August of this year, the county's voters approved the economic ad valorem tax exemption proposition by a vote of 27,023 for and 23,233 against. As a result of that action, the county's economic ad valorem tax exemption program was extended an additional 10 years. Attached to my memorandum is a copy of Resolution Number 22-156, which acknowledges the results of the August 23rd election and renews the exemption for an additional 10-year period beginning August 23rd, 2022. As we've stated previously, county staff, administration, Mr. Satterley, the EDC, a number of our private economic development partners, were, assisted us in educating the public and, and getting this in front of, and the board, of course, voted to put it in front of the public, so this is a positive result. Staff recommends approval.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution. We have a motion, do we have a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Hart and Rec?
Mr. Chairman, just before you move on, I do want to just emphasize Mr. McIntyre's comments that Mark Satterley and Eric Gill from our staff really led the effort to make sure that there was information made available to the public at their request, so that we could share, you know, the, the positive impacts that this program has had. And then our business partners in the community, in particular, the, the realtors, really stepped up and helped with that as well. So it's, it's been a proven economic development tool over these years. It's great that it's been reauthorized, because it is, it's essential for us to be competitive. So I just want to make sure that we give, we give credit to everybody, and of course, the advocacy on, on the part of this board as well.
Many of our citizens, as, because I could only educate, not advocate, but many of our citizens did not know that although we gave ad valorem exemptions for the county, they still paid into the school districts, they still paid into the fire district, and a lot of people did not know that. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
He already did.
Oh, we did, okay, that's right, you, you had an add-on. Okay, we pulled C1, we have one more quasi-judicial, that it's all storage, requesting a major, major site plan approval?
Mr. Chair, I've only spoken with staff.
We have a motion?
Staff.
No, staff.
Present, right?
We're, it's quasi-judicial, we have to disclose.
I'm sorry.
Staff.
Staff.
I already did, yeah.
Linda?
Staff.
Staff. And Chris, staff?
Staff.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to just make the motion to approve this, unless you want to hear the presentation?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. He's saying, "Wait a minute, wait a minute."
I think we have to put it on record.
There's no reason to discuss it, I, I mean, I'm good with it.
I know, but I think for the record, he has to put it on.
Yeah. That's the one on Sunshine Boulevard in US 1, right? Yeah, I have no problem with it.
Call for the vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Easy as job you had all night.
I was thinking, nobody wants to talk to me.
Right, just for the record, there was a staff memorandum and a recommendation of approval, and the board simply voted to approve staff recommendations.
Major site plan subject to the conditions in Resolution 2222147. Okay, announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners, we are in budget season. And so, on Thursday, September the 8th, at 6:00 PM, the commission, in these commission chambers, we will have the first of two budget hearings. The second budget hearing will be on September 22nd, both of those begin at 6:00 PM. Additionally, the Board of County Commissioners will hold an informal meeting on Tuesday, September 13th, at 9:00 AM here in these chambers. And then lastly, three items coming up in the future. We have the 2022 U.S. Nationals Firefighter Challenge Championship on September 22nd through the 24th at the Moore's Creek Boat Ramp and Bacchus Gallery and Manatee Center here in Fort Pierce. We have the Fall Festival and Plant Sale on Saturday, October 15th, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the St. Lucie County Extension Office on 8400 Pecos Road. And then the Seventh Annual Indian River Lagoon Science Festival on Saturday, October 22nd, from 10:00 to 3:00 at the Veterans Memorial Park in Fort Pierce. So we're getting into the season where people are feeling like you can be outside and, and not need to hydrate every other minute.
Just one thing real quick.
Go ahead, Commissioner Borg.
Thank you for all of that, Howard, but we've got to remember, too, that there will be services in several areas of the county for 911.
9/11.
911. 911. In my head, in my head.
I'm sure that'll be on our website, any events in the city and the counties, we'll have that up on their websites for 9/11. Never forget. And with that, we'll adjourn the meeting, thank you, everyone.